At this time, I'd like to call the first meeting of 2022 of Tiffin City Council to order. The prayer and pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilmember Gillig.
Please join me in a prayer. Dear Lord, in this our 200th year as a city, let us continue to look to the universal truths that have been shared throughout our collective history. We can learn and grow together in your son's name. Amen.
Amen.
Do you want me for the pledge, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dan. At this time, I'll take the role of the councilmembers. Councilmember Gillig.
Here.
Councilmember Yanatuno. Councilmember Jones.
Present.
Councilmember Perkins.
Here.
Councilmember Perry.
Here.
Councilmember Rhodes.
Here.
Okay, let the record show that six of the seven councilmembers are present for tonight's meeting. At this time, the next order of business is pursuant to the section of the Tiffin City Charter will be the selection of the Clerk of Counsel, as this is the first meeting in January following the regular municipal election. Resolution 22-1 is prepared and will be introduced by Dan Perry, appointing M. Forrest as the Clerk of Counsel for the two-year term beginning January 1st of 2022 through December 31st of 2023. So at this time, I will entertain a motion. Thank you, councilmember.
Thank you. I'd like to ask for immediate passage of Resolution 22-1.
Thank you. Sir, a second. Councilmember Perkins.
I'd like a second, please.
For a second, all in favor, just gonna buy by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
And how would you like to... Come over there, or do you like to come out here?
Excuse me.
And repeat after me.
I am M. Forrest.
I am M. Forrest.
You solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Charter of the City of Tiffin.
And the Charter of the City of Tiffin.
I will in all respects
I will in all respects
uphold and enforce
uphold and enforce
the general laws of the State of Ohio.
The general laws of the State of Ohio.
And the Charter and ordinances of the City of Tiffin.
And the Charter and ordinances of the City of Tiffin.
And will faithfully discharge
and will faithfully discharge
the duties of Clerk of Counsel
the duties of Clerk of Counsel
of the City of Tiffin, Seneca County, Ohio.
Of the City of Tiffin, Seneca County, Ohio.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Grazie. Couple of meeting announcements this evening. This is a notice of compliance with the Charter, Section 3.09, to announce the meeting of Tiffin City Council on Tuesday, January 4th, 2022, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers at City Hall for the purpose of the step forth in the attached agenda. Second announcement, I'd like to announce a special meeting to take place on January 25th at 5:00 PM in council chambers to consider Resolution 22-7. That concludes the announcements. Moving into petitions, are there any petitions?
There are no petitions, Madam President.
Thank you. Minutes, minutes for December 20th, regular and committee of the whole meetings were distributed. Does anyone have any questions, corrections, or comments? Seeing none, the minutes will stand approved as presented. At this time, I would like to announce the committee assignments for this year's council committees. So, starting with the Finance Committee, then Councilmember Gillig, you will be the Chair. Surprise. And then additional committee members will be the First Ward Councilmember, as well as Councilmember Yanatuno. Long Community Planning, First Ward Councilmember will resume as the Chair. Councilmember Gillig and Councilmember Perry will be additional councilmembers. Materials and Equipment, Councilmember Jones will stay as Chair. Councilmember Rhodes and Councilmember Gillig will be additional committee members. Personal and Labor Relations, Councilmember Perry as Chair, Councilmember Gillig and Councilmember Perkins as members. Recreation and Public Property, Councilmember Rhodes as Chair, Councilmember Jones and Councilmember Perry as additional committee members. Street Sidewalks and Sewers, Councilmember Perkins as Chair, Councilmember Jones, Councilmember Yanatuno, Councilmember Perry, and the First Ward Councilmember will be additional committee members. Economic Development and Downtown Planning, Councilmember Yanatuno as Chair, First Ward Councilmember, as well as Zach Perkins, excuse me, Councilmember Perkins as committee members. Additional committee representatives, ADA Advisory Committee Representative, Councilmember Perkins. Downtown Development Representative, be the First Ward Councilmember. Park Board Representative, Councilmember Rhodes. Planning Commission Representative, Councilmember Gillig. Regional Planning Representative, Councilmember Yanatuno. Revolving Loan Fund and Venture Capital Chair, Councilmember Perry. TSEP Representative, First Ward Councilmember. Training Commission Representative, Councilmember Jones. Any questions on the committee assignments? Yes, Councilmember Perkins.
Can I take the TSEP representative role?
Yeah. Absolutely. Does anybody else want to? No. Okay. All right, yes, we will switch that up. And then, Councilmember Perkins, I will switch the First Ward Councilmember to the ADA Advisory Committee. Any other questions on the committee assignments? Okay, moving into committee reports. Finance Committee, Councilmember Gillig.
No report this evening, Madam President.
Thank you. Long Community Planning, that chair is currently vacant, but there is no report. Materials and Equipment, Councilmember Jones.
No report at this time, Madam President.
Thank you. Personnel and Labor Relations, Councilmember Perry.
No report, Madam President.
It's the curse of you.
I can't. You could be a good parrot.
Recreation and Public Property, Councilmember Rhodes.
Report at this time, Madam President.
Thank you. Street Sidewalks and Sewers, Councilmember Perkins.
Yes. A street sidewalk and sewer committee meeting was held December 28th, 2021, in the Mark Hayes Committee Room. Attending were committee members Stephen Leopard, Ken Jones, and Zach Perkins, Mayor Montz, Director of Law Brent Howard, and City Engineer Matt Watson. Leopard called the meeting to order at 2:00 PM and stated that the purpose of the meeting was to discuss the mayor's request for legislation, 21-52 RFQs regarding combined sewer overflows. Engineer Watson informed the committee that the next phase of the long-term control plan as required by the EPA is CSO 16 and includes the entire west end of the city. Watson stated that the entire CSO 16 area would not be cost feasible to replace at one time, so CSO 16 will be subdivided. The two areas that construction will take place are CSO 16-3 and 16-6. 16-3 is the Cherry Nelson Street area, and 16-6 is the Tiffin Point area and west of Hopewell Avenue. The request is that legislation be approved, that the city will have the ability to request for design services for the two areas described. Engineer Watson reported that there will be many areas of the city with large sewer projects that will be ongoing at the same time along with normal sewer maintenance projects. A motion was introduced by committee member Perkins, authorized and directed by law to prepare legislation to allow for the solicitation of RFQs for consulting and engineering services and a contract with the successful person or firm through the RFQ process. The motion was seconded by committee member Jones and passed 3 to 0. Mayor Montz asked the committee to consider expediting the process and suspending the three reading rule to not only increase efficiencies, but to save local tax dollars. Mayor Montz and engineer Watson informed the committee that ODOT urban paving dollars may become available very soon, and if they do not, and if they do, City Council may have to act swiftly to secure the grant. The grant would be for paving the state routes that are within the city. A very tight timeline will be in effect. With no further business, the committee adjourned at 2:23 PM.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you, Councilmember Perkins. Economic Development and Downtown Planning, anyone from this committee? Does anyone have a report?
No report at this time.
Thank you. Committee of the Whole, does anyone see the need to have a committee of the whole meeting? Okay, moving on to reports of the officers. His Honor Mayor Aaron D. Montz is ill this evening. However, do have a couple things to report on his behalf. We do have Chief Pauli here this evening to award several commendations to members of the Police Department. So please proceed.
I'm gonna remove this, because this gets fogged up otherwise.
No worries.
And I need these. Thank you, Madam President, members of council. This is a good night for the Tiffin Police Department. Every day, the members of the Tiffin Police Department assume the risk on behalf of this community. Some days are uneventful, other days are full of danger. In some days, their dedication to this work of public service leads them to perform exceptional acts of heroism, service, and guardianship. The community of Tiffin largely stands in support of its police officers and respects the acts of selflessness those officers carry out for its benefit. There's no shortage of these acts of service at the Tiffin Police Department. They occur every day with no fanfare and no recognition. These fine officers, and truly all the officers of the Tiffin Police Department, will tell you that they are simply doing their jobs. And while that's true, we have this opportunity this evening to recognize some of the heroics demanded of officers just doing their jobs and to recognize these brave officers that rose to meet the moment when it came. So I'd like to introduce some outstanding public servants that deserve some recognition for their deeds, and I thank you for the chance to do so. Could Officers Christopher Perry, Andrew Stevens, Kyle Illig, and Elizabeth Miller if we stand up for the board, for the council? On December 19th, 2021, officers were dispatched for a suicidal subject that had taken a bottle of pills. It was all hands on deck at this point to locate the subject. He was located by Officer Stevens, standing on a bridge, and observed attempting to cut his wrists with a knife. Officers began speaking with the subject and continued to speak with the subject in an attempt to de-escalate the situation and get him some needed assistance. The subject, ignoring all attempts of de-escalation and help, instead jumped off the bridge and into the water. Officers sprang into action, running alongside the banks and attempting to snag the subject, who at this time was being pulled by the current with only his head above the water. As the subject clearly exhibiting ill effects of the cold water, likely in the 40s, I'm estimating, unintentionally drifted closer to the bank. Officer Illig and Miller jumped into the water, not knowing if he still was holding a knife, corralled him, secured him, and navigated towards the shore. Officers Perry and Stevens, along with Tiffin EMS, assisted in pulling him out and rendering first aid. The subject was then transported to Tiffin Mercy Hospital. Officer Stevens and Officer Perry, your training and quick response undoubtedly saved this person's life. You are hereby awarded the Departmental Life Saving Award. Officers Illig and Officer Miller, you are commended for your heroic act that goes beyond the call of duty in risking your personal safety to rescue and save another person. You are hereby awarded the Departmental Medal of Valor. The actions of all four of you are in keeping with the finest tradition of the Tiffin Police Department, and I'm proud to have you patrolling our streets and neighborhoods, making a difference in our community. Thank you all, and congratulations. Could Officer Justin Nowak please step up? On December 27th, 2021, while on patrol, Officer Nowak observed a vehicle traveling southbound on North Washington Street and recognized a passenger in the vehicle as a known subject with an active arrest warrant. Officer Nowak confirmed the warrant with dispatch and initiated a traffic stop. Upon approaching the vehicle, Officer Nowak observed a black backpack on the floor between the legs of the subject with the warrant. The subject was arrested, removed from the vehicle, read his Miranda rights, and subsequently confessed to having contraband. The contraband, suspected methamphetamine and fentanyl, was located in the subject's pockets. Additionally, more narcotics and two weapons were located. One of those weapons was reported stolen out of Findlay, Ohio. Those were seized all during this arrest. Your go-getter approach to law enforcement and your investigative talents led to the seizure of drugs and firearms. Your attention to detail and nose for this type of investigation is commendable. For your exceptional work, you are hereby awarded the Departmental Community Service Award. This is Officer Nowak's third Community Service Award. This is an exceptional officer here. Really, all of them are exceptional officers, and I'm very proud to have them here in front of you today. The Tiffin Police Department is proud to have officers of this caliber who can go above and beyond the call of duty and serve the residents of this city. Thank you all for allowing us this time, and congratulations to the officers. Thank you.
Congratulations to you all. Thank you for everything you guys do. Okay, continuing with the mayor's report, just a couple of other items. Excuse me, we finished 2021 with an all-time record high in income tax collections, surpassing $11 million for the first time. We beat 2020 numbers, which was our previous record high, by just under $700,000. December finished strong, beating December 2020 by approximately $63,000, or 6.6%. COVID-19 cases are significantly high right now amongst city staff. Several departments have reported multiple employees out, with some departments missing four or more employees. So this will definitely mostly lead to overtime. Administration plans to ask employees and visitors to please mask when coming close to other people and/or entering common areas to help blunt COVID-19 cases related to Omicron strain. Departments are also being encouraged to move every meeting they legally can to virtual format. We cannot afford to lose any more employees in safety forces right now due to significant spread in those departments. First meeting of the Tiffin Municipal Arts Commission was held today and went extremely well. The next meeting will be held on January 18th at 10:00 AM at City Hall. The administration is meeting next week virtually with bond counsel to begin bond processes for Progress Parkway. Main Street Accreditation Hearing is set for January 13th. City and Downtown Development Board meet with Heritage Ohio and they will make the case to continue our accreditation for the Ohio Main Street program. Nick Dutrow, who we have in the audience today, his first day will be January 10th. Judy's last day is this week. And lastly, Martin Luther King Day being January 17th, the city offices are closed, and the council, that council meeting will be held on Tuesday, once again instead of Monday. Any questions that I can answer for mayor's report? Thank you. All right, moving on, Clerk of Counsel M. Forrest.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Director of Finance Kathy Kaufman.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Director of Law Brent Howard.
Yes, thank you. I want to talk about Resolution 22-7 and Ordinance 22-3. Both involve the road and bridge levy. I want to talk about the procedure and substance involving those items. First, you recall at your last council meeting, we had a brief discussion about placing a continuation of the road and bridge levy on the ballot for the voters to decide. And at your direction, we have legislation, the items I just mentioned, in front of you this evening. Resolution 22-7, that is necessary, because what that does is that declares the necessity on your part to ask the voters whether they wish to continue the road and bridge levy. So that is the actual mechanism for placing the issue on the ballot in May. The ordinance is actually an amendment to your income tax code. It increases the income tax percentage a quarter percent from 1 and 3/4 to 2% for, and this is the substance of your road and bridge levy, it is for a five-year period. It begins January 1st, 2024, because the current road and bridge levy will continue undisturbed by any legislation that you may be, you're considering this month until the end of 2023. So the amendment, the proposed amendment for the voters to consider is for a five-year period of time, beginning January 1st, 2024, through December 31st, 2028. It is a quarter percent amount. It has the same purpose as the prior current road and bridge levy. And one thing I want to note that it does not have in it, and this is again as it is right now, so there are really no changes to it. This is just a continuation of the same terms. But we made it clear, and it will be on the ballot this way, that none of the additional revenue can be used for any employee expense. So this is all going for road and bridge improvements. It goes for the bonding to allow for this to happen, but doesn't go for any employee expense at City Hall. You'll find that actually in the ballot language, and it's in the code section that you are proposing for the voters. The procedure that you need to follow is you'll introduce both of these items of legislation this evening. You'll need to have three readings of the resolution. You only have one regular council meeting before it has to be presented to the Board of Elections. The deadline is the end of Business Day, February 2nd. So, as we talked in Committee of the Whole, as was announced by the President of Council, that you have a special meeting on the 25th of this month at 5:00. And the purpose of that meeting is for a third reading and consideration of Resolution 22-7. The ordinance, you need to introduce it this evening. You can read it for a second time at your next meeting. But then at that meeting, I would ask that you table that ordinance, because you cannot actually consider it. By law, you have no authority to increase the tax levy by a quarter percent to 2%. The only way that that can be done is by the will of the voters, like they did before in 2018. So you need to table it and then wait for the vote to determine whether to pass it or defeat it. So you'll wait till the May election and see what the voters do. You'll receive a certified result of the election in May from the Board of Elections. And then at that time, you'll have that knowledge. You'll take the item off the table and then respond how the voters directed you to. Are there any questions about those two items of legislation, both the substance of them and also the procedure? Councilmember Perkins.
Just one question. The previous ordinance that this will be replacing this tax resolution, is there any difference at all in the original?
Only the dates.
Okay, other than that, it's identical?
It's identical. The language, the terminology, only the dates. The only other little bit of change of the language is that it made clear that this does not disturb the current levy. It will continue, as the voters had approved it before, through the end of 2023. Because we are in advance of that, and the voters will be voting now, we want to make it clear, this does not in any way change what they voted before. It will only go into effect 1-1-2024.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions? And that concludes my report.
Awesome. Okay, we are now under written communications.
We have mayor's request for legislation number 21-56 for multi-use trail within the city.
Mayor's request for legislation number 21-56 will be forwarded to the Recreation and Public Property Committee.
Mayor's request for legislation number 21-57. It's a request for qualifications, RFQs, for the Ellis Street Bridge project.
Mayor's request for legislation number 21-57, I typically would have forwarded this to the Long Community Planning Committee as that seat, as that chair sits vacant right now. I guess I would ask the question to council, does anyone have any issues with this request? This has been a longstanding project that we've been talking about for quite some time, and the RFQs is necessary to move forward. So if no one has any issues, I guess I would entertain a motion. So if no one has any issues, I guess I would entertain a motion for somebody to direct the law director. Councilmember Gillig.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I would so move to direct our Director of Law to prepare legislation for mayor's request for legislation 21-57.
Thank you. Is there a second? Yes, Councilmember.
Yeah, I'll second, Madam President.
Thank you. A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Then we have mayor's letter of appreciation to Phyllis Capuccini for her donation of $100 to the Tiffin Fire and Rescue Division.
Mayor's letter of appreciation will be held on file in the clerk's office.
That concludes the written communications, Madam President.
Thank you. We are now under oral communications. Anyone wishing to address council may step up to the podium, sign in, and direct their questions to Council President. Seeing none, we are now under motions. Yes, Councilmember Barry.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion that Resolution 21-3 through 21-6 all be read and voted on once.
There's a motion for 21-3 through 21-6 to be read as one. Is there a second? Yes, Councilmember Perkins.
I'd like to second the motion, please.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Are there any other motions? Okay, we are now under resolutions and ordinances.
Resolution 22-2, introduced -- let's see. Oh, I have the wrong pot. Excuse me.
Oh, no problem.
I need to sign once. I had -- yeah, I'm looking for the sign. I'm sorry. I must have gotten -- there's so many tonight. One sec.
Messed those up pretty good.
Yeah, you did. That's okay. Forgive it. Okay, I know you introduced those, so we'll just go with that. Resolution number 22-2. Resolution introduced by Dan Perry. Resolution appointing Benjamin M. Gillig, President pro tempore of Tiffin City Council for a two-year term beginning January 1st, 2022, ending December 31st, 2023.
This is the first reading of Resolution 22-2. Yes, Councilmember Barry.
Thank you, Madam President. I would so move that we vote to pass Resolution 22-2.
Thank you. There's a motion for passing Resolution 22-2. Is there a second, Councilman Perkins?
I'd like to second the motion, please.
Thank you. There's a first and a second for passing Resolution 22-2. I will now ask the clerk to call the roll, to vote on the passage.
Councilmember Gillig.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
And Rhodes.
Yes.
The records show Resolution 22-2 passes with a vote of 6 to 0.
It was 5 to 0.
5 to 0, I'm sorry. Excuse me.
Resolution number 22-3, introduced by Daniel Perry. Resolution approving mayor's appointment of Dennis J. Berger to serve a two-year term on the Americans with Disabilities Act Advisory Committee, ADA, from January 1st, 2022 until December 31st, 2023. Resolution number 22-4, introduced by Daniel Perry. Resolution approving mayor's appointment of Jeremy Croy to serve a four-year term on the Park and Recreation Board from January 1st, 2022 until December 31st, 2025. Resolution 22-5, introduced by Daniel Perry. Resolution approving mayor's appointment of Richard A. Foote Jr. to serve a six-year term on the Civil Service Commission from January 1st, 2022 until December 31st, 2027. And Resolution number 22-6, introduced by Daniel Perry. Resolution approving mayor's appointment of Cheyenne Thacker, L. Thacker, to serve a four-year term on the Planning Commission from January 1st, 2022 until December 31st, 2025.
This is the first reading of Resolution 22-3 through 22-6. Yes, Councilman Perry.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like for passage of Resolution 21-3 through Resolution 22-6.
There's a motion to pass Resolution 22-3 through 22-6. Councilmember Gillig.
I'd like to second the motion, Madam President.
Thank you. There is a motion and a second to pass 22-3 through 22-6. I will ask the clerk to call the roll to vote on the passage. Thank you. Is there any discussion?
We didn't even let Rich ease into a two-year appointment.
That's right. Any other discussion? I will ask the clerk to call -- oh, sorry. Yes.
I'm speaking of two years and six years. And again, I ask questions that I think maybe the public would be interested in knowing. Why is the -- and again, I could look into charter, I haven't done that, but the Civil Service Commission is a six-year term. A lot of these others are two and four years. What's between? I know it's two years from six to four, but.
Right. I can say that if you look at the codified ordinance section, there are different terms for different boards and commissions. Why particular ones? Probably the longer ones are boards and commissions that need more time to understand and get the experience, and once you get that experience, you want to make sure that it's utilized. So I think in civil service, it can be a technical type of a position, you need to understand the process, and so, the longer the term, the better, once we get somebody well-trained.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? I will ask the clerk to call the vote on the passage.
Councilmember Gillig.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
And Rhodes.
Yes.
The records show that Resolution 22-3 through 22-6 passes with a vote of 5 to 0.
Resolution number 22-7, introduced by Ben Gillig. A resolution declaring the necessity of an election on the question of approving the passage of an ordinance to amend Sections 197.012 and 197.013 of the codified ordinances of the City of Tiffin, Ohio, in order to provide for the continuation of the city's 1/4% municipal income tax increase during the period from January 1, 2024 through December 31, 2028, to provide funds to pay certain costs of maintaining, repairing, and improving public streets in the city and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of Resolution 22-7.
Under ordinances, we have ordinance number 21-114, introduced by Don Yanatuno. Ordinance enacting Section 134.16 of Tiffin Codified Ordnances, establishing a returned check fee.
This is the third reading of Ordinance 21-114. Yes, Councilmember Gillig.
Thank you, Madam President. As Chair of the Finance Committee, I would like to, in Councilmember Yanatuno's absence, request passage of Ordinance 21-114.
There's a motion on the table for -- to pass Ordinance 21-114. Is there a second? Yes, Councilmember Jones.
I'll second that motion, Madam President.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the passage.
Councilmember Gillig.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard. I'm sorry. It's an old sheet. For me, for, yeah. Something opened in '21, yeah. Perkins.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
And Rhodes.
Yes.
Ordinance 21-114 passes with a vote of 5 to 0.
Ordinance number 21-115, introduced by Don Yanatuno. Ordinance amending Section 1129.04 of Tiffin Codified Ordnances, increasing the city engineer's fee for reviewing and processing subdivision flats.
This is the third reading of Ordinance 21-115. Councilmember Gillig.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to ask for passage of Ordinance 21-115.
There's a motion to pass Ordinance 21-115. Is there a second? Councilmember Perkins.
I'd like to second most, Madam President.
Thank you. There's a first and a second for ordinance -- passage of Ordinance 21-115. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I will ask the clerk to call the vote on the passage.
Councilmember Gillig.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
And Rhodes.
Yes.
Ordinance 21-115 passes with a vote of 5 to 0.
Ordinance number 21-116, introduced by Don Yanatuno. Ordinance enacting Chapter 936, Small Cell Facilities in the Right-of-Way of Tiffin Codified Ordnances, and declaring an emergency.
This is the third reading of Ordinance 21-116. Yes, Councilmember Perkins.
I'd like to ask for passage of Ordinance 21-116.
Thank you. There's a motion on the table for passage of Ordinance 21-116. Is there a second? Councilmember Perry.
I'll second, Madam President.
Thank you. There is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, I will ask the clerk to call the vote first on the emergency.
Councilmember Gillig.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
And Rhodes.
Yes.
Emergency passes 5 to 0. I will now ask the clerk to call the vote on the passage.
Councilmember Gillig.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
And Rhodes.
Yes.
Ordinance 21-116 passes with a vote of 5 to 0.
Ordinance number 21-121, introduced by Steve Leopard. Ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept a deed and a temporary easement and take all other actions necessary to acquire property by deed and easement from the Board of Education of the Tiffin City School District, also known as Tiffin City Board of Education, to construct the new Ella Street River Bridge.
This is the second reading of Ordinance 21-121.
Ordinance number 21-122, introduced by Steve Leopard. Ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept a deed and an easement and take all other actions necessary to acquire property by a deed and a temporary easement from Aqua Ohio Incorporated, FKA Ohio American Water Company, to construct the new Ella Street River Bridge.
This is the second reading of Ordinance 21-122.
Ordinance number 22-1, introduced by Kenneth Jones. Ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept an easement and take all their actions necessary to acquire real property rights from Heidelberg University to construct repairs and improvements to the Rock Creek Wall, and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of Ordinance 22-1.
Ordinance number 22-2, introduced by Ben Gillig. Ordinance amending Budget Ordinance 21-105 to provide funds for expenditures approved in 2021 for projects which were not fully completed in that year and must be carried over into 2022.
This is the first reading of Ordinance 22-2. This is Councilmember Gillig.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to ask for suspension of council's three-reading rule and immediate passage of Ordinance 22-2.
There's a motion on the table for suspending council's three-reading rule for Ordinance 22-2. Is there a second? Yes, Councilman Perkins.
I'd like to second the motion, Madam President.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Yes.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. These are dollars that should not be spent in the 2021 budget, but are needed pretty well immediately in the 2022 budget, which is why we've asked for suspension. This is money that was already promised and probably shouldn't pay it.
Thank you so much. Any other discussion? Okay, we will -- I'll ask the clerk to call the vote on the suspension.
Councilmember Gillig.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
And Rhodes.
Yes.
Suspension passes with a vote of 5 to 0. I'll now ask the clerk to call the vote on the passage.
Pass for discussion on emergency passage. It should be separate. The discussion before was on suspension. Now, is there any discussion on emergency or passage of the ordinance?
Do we have an emergency on this?
I'm sorry, not -- it doesn't have to because of the type of legislation under Section 4.07, but you just ask for a different discussion. Because discussion on suspension should be kind of separate from the actual substance of the ordinance, so we typically have different, you know, discussion times. So before vote on passage, ask any discussion on the ordinance.
Is there any discussion on Ordinance 22-2? Okay, seeing none, I will ask the clerk to call the vote on the passage.
Councilmember Gillig.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Rhodes.
Yes.
Awesome. Ordinance 22-2 passes with a vote of 5 to 0.
Ordinance number 22-3, introduced by Ben Gillig. An ordinance amending Sections 197.012 and 197.013 of the codified ordinances of the City of Tiffin, Ohio, in order to provide for the continuation of the city's existing 1/4% municipal income tax levy during the period from January 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2028, to provide funds to pay certain costs of maintaining, repairing, and improving public streets in the city.
This is the first reading of Ordinance 22-3.
Ordinance number 22-4, introduced by Kenneth Jones. Ordinance authorizing and directing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with a professional design firm for consulting services and preparation of the engineering and design for the Inflow Reduction Project with Combined Sewer Overflow 16 and Basin 16, and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of Ordinance 22-4. Councilmember Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. I would ask city council to suspend the three-reading rule on Ordinance 22-4.
I think there's a motion to suspend Ordinance 22-4. Is there a second?
I could shut out in your first meeting.
Councilmember Rhodes. You just want to second that?
I'd like to second that.
Awesome. Thank you. There's a motion and a second to suspend Ordinance 22-4. Is there any discussion? Yes, Councilmember Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. Reason we're asking for suspension of the three-reading rule is this was not blessed, approved by the Street Sidewalk Sewer Committee meeting on 12/28/21, and it would save dollars and increase efficiencies by passing it tonight.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I will ask the clerk to call the vote on the suspension.
Councilmember Gillig.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
And Rhodes.
Yes.
Suspension passes with a vote of 5 to 0. I will now ask if there's any discussion on the emergency, correct, and passage. Seeing none, I will ask the clerk to call the vote on the emergency.
Councilmember Gillig.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
And Rhodes.
Yes.
Emergency passes with a vote of 5 to 0. I'll now ask the clerk to call the vote on the passage.
Councilmember Gillig.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
And Rhodes.
Yes.
Ordinance 22-4 passes with a vote of 5 to 0.
That concludes the ordinances, Madam President.
Thank you. Is there any other business to go to the order? Would you like to schedule your committee meeting?
Yes, Madam President. Member Jones and Perry, do you have times available, do you know?
Available when? I'm sorry, Councilmember Rhodes.
So this is to discuss -- sorry, I'll jump in. This is to discuss mayor's request for legislation number 21-56. There's a -- he needs to schedule Recreation and Public Property meeting.
Would you want to do it before or after? Can we do it before our special meeting or before next meeting?
Yep.
I mean, maybe before our next meeting.
On the 18th?
Yeah. Maybe on the 18th. You want to do like six? What's that? It'd be the 18th, before our next meeting.
Tuesday, the 18th.
Okay. Yeah, that'll work. Okay.
Six, okay. I'm good.
Probably do 6:15. Do you think that is gonna, I don't think that would, meeting would take very long.
I don't think it's going to take very long, no. It's just the one item.
Yeah.
What do you think, Brent?
Um, yeah, it, that's probably right. It, 6:15 would be fine.
Okay.
And typically what then happens is to, once there's a consensus on when the meeting's scheduled, the chair of the committee would say, then I'd like to announce to the public and to council that there is a Recreation and Public Property Committee meeting scheduled for January 18th at 6:15. Uh, the purpose of the meeting is to consider mayor's request for legislation 21-56 involving a multi-use trail within the city of Tiffin, and any other business may become, may come before the meeting. So that's what you would say to announce the meeting.
If you want to do that now. Okay.
You can, you can adopt what I said. That's quite all right with me, you know, the...
So you'll just want to announce the, uh, Recreation and Public Property meeting?
Okay, so I'd like to announce the Recreation and Public Property meeting scheduled for January, or January 18th at 6:15 p.m. to discuss mayor's request for legislation 21-56 and any other business that comes before the committee.
And the location is going to be here in the council committee room.
And the location will be in the council committee room.
Awesome, thank you. Anything else? Anyone? Okay, thanks. Thanks for bearing with me, guys.
You did great.
Thanks, awesome. All right, well, we will stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone.